We'll start with public comment. That is right after the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands my mission under God, in his law, to the liberty and justice of our all. Thank you. Next we'll do commendations, very commendations. Okay. Now we will start with public, we will do public comment and just want to remind you that our policy allows individuals up to three minutes to present their materials. And that this segment should not exceed fifteen minutes overall. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. That is budget superintendent performance and school policy. And I'll, I will give individuals a fifteen second prompt to let them know their time is expiring. Does anyone virtually want to make a public comment? All right, given that they know. They do not see any hands, we will move on to our student representative. Well, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, how are you? Um, good. We're now most of the way through the fall athletic season and our, all of our athletic teams have a winning record, which is awesome. Football team is five and O, games this Friday and on Halloween night. Volleyball is eleven and two. Golf is eleven, two and two. Field hockey is seven, five and two. Boys soccer is eight and three. Girls soccer is nine, one and two. Girls cross country is undefeated at seven and O and boys cross country is four and three. Last week, the high school participated in both the Mass General Hospital and MHS rescue assessment surveys, which went very well. Winter sports registration opened a few days ago, as has registration for powder puff. Uh, the powder puff practices will occur throughout November and there will be a game against Swamp Scott on November twenty second. Sophomores and juniors will take the PSAT next week on October twenty second, as freshmen participate in the day of service and seniors visit a college of their choosing. The National Honors Society has begun offering tutoring for any students in need of extra support. They can sign up online to be matched with an NHS student. Tutoring is available for all core classes and some electives. The MHS Performing Arts are hosting Rock the Arts tonight, uh, with live music on November sixth at the Arts Association Hooper Mansion. All funds raised from ticket sales and silent auction will support the arts at MHS, including instrument repairs, sets and costumes, and scholarships for graduating seniors. Last week, the performing arts department, including the band orchestra and chorus, took a field trip to Boston where they attended performances at Symphony Hall and a performance of Cinderella at the Boston Conservatory at Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to district updates, superintendent program.
Um, so good evening. Um, I'd like to start off by saying I'm following. Um, there is no place for hate in our schools or in our community. We want to ensure that all Marlboro Head students, staff and community partners are respected, feel welcomed and safe, and that everyone has a voice at the table. Students need to continue to stand up for each other and continue to report issues of hate and discrimination to trusted adults so that it can be addressed immediately. Staff need to continue to address instances of discrimination in the moment. Um, to demonstrate that we will not tolerate hate within our schools. Parents are encouraged to have conversations about not tolerating hateful speech in school and out of school. It takes a collaborative effort to affect positive change, so working together is the only way we can ensure that everyone feels like they are a meaningful part of our learning community. Um, now onto some, some updates. Uh, the Health and Wellness Committee that, um, it's charged with running, I finally got up and scheduled, uh, we're scheduled to meet on October twenty third. Uh, we will begin to review our current wellness policy, which is slated to be reviewed every three years. Uh, committee will determine meeting frequency and agenda items, uh, as we move forward as part of the mission meeting. So again, just like the other committees, I'll do updates, um, after we meet. That folks know where we stand, um, and I thank Megan Calpin for just, you know, keeping, um, that wellness policy on the front burner for us. She was wanting to just remind me that we have to do that every three years. We're actually doing, doing, doing to do that. Um, our anti-discrimination committee meetings, uh, is meeting tomorrow. Um, I will share how Dr. Mary Mark Helfern's presentation with our administrators went and what was discussed. Um, I would have that conversation with the anti-discrimination committee and I'll bring it back. Follow to the, to the, uh, the committee. We'll also be discussing the recent hate messages and, you know, how we address those and what thoughts we have about moving forward there. Um, our next school committee meeting, our principals will do the MCAS presentations. It's the plan anyway. Make sure it gets that, it's on the agenda and share the positives and the areas of growth along with spreading for improvement. Um, I think we're going to do a little bit differently this year. Uh, principals better share out in their schools. Um, and I think we'll have some rich discussions about, about the MCAS presentation, basically, and how our schools move. Uh, Julia and I met with the PTO PCO Central Council this morning, um, and I just want to take a moment to thank our parent groups publicly for all their hard work and efforts in providing enrichment activities to our students. This is truly remarkable how awesome this network is and the work that they do for our students outstanding. I shared that with the group this morning. Um, it's just, I'm just don't bother how much they do for, for our schools and for our students and I want to make that publicly clear this evening. Uh, the Board of Health has partnered with UMass to do a townwide survey for residents eighteen and up. You may have seen the messaging for that around town. Um, I met with the team today. So we're kind of meeting in a, in a regular manner, um, to see how the survey participation is going. And I said that I would mention the survey tonight. Um, so if you haven't taken the survey, um, we're encouraged to do so. It's really for students, uh, every town resident eighteen years and older. And that will really inform the Board of Health and other town entities how they can support our community in, in broader ways. So, um, the messaging is out there. There's QR codes, there's postcards have been sent out. If you run our district, um, bat, bat, if we haven't, I'll do that. Um, but it's getting in all sorts of different forms. So I just encourage you to go ahead and do that. So far, I think they're looking, so far, um, they've got a good turnout and just trying to be pushing in and run the survey until, um, middle of November. Um, so yeah, here's some more messaging. I think there's been some messaging in the alert system. So I said I'll talk about that tonight. Um, and then I started doing the shout outs for staffs at, um, two meetings ago when I was here and I wanted to continue that. So if you'll bear with me, uh, from our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching Learning Julia Ferrer. Uh, October is National Principals Month, so a big shout out to our amazing, um, Marlboro Head Public School Principals, Michelle Carlson, High School Principal here. Matt Lavangi, Marlboro Head Ventures Middle School Principal, Scott Williams, Village School Principal, Frank Kowalski Glover School Principal, and Mary Maxwell, our Bronson Principal. Juliette continues on by saying that our MPS Principals are the heart of each school who leave with courage, dedication, and an unwavering commitment to student success. They use their experience and insights to build welcoming, inclusive school cultures where our students and staff feel a sense of belonging. The genuine care for our school community, our principals work tirelessly to make a lasting positive impact on both students and staff. So thank you for, for those kind words. I'm sure the principals appreciate that. And, you know, our staff and students can, um, have share their, um, their celebration of the principals as well. Um, from our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Lisa Marie Belito, um, she wanted to do a shout out to Lisa Manning and Todd Bloodgood for their dedication to providing safe transportation for our students. They are so accommodating and wealth of knowledge, um, of the speaks of Marlboro Head. Uh, it, it, I'm actually glad that she did the shout out because they don't get enough recognition. You know, we are, we're all in the same building and, and I listen to and hear from and have conversations with Lisa Manning every morning about, you know, trials and tribulations of dropping kids off and picking them up and rescheduling and sending, you know, kids getting not a bus stop, it's sending us back. And it's amazing how much work, um, that she and Todd do. Um, and, you know, they're, they're in charge of all, uh, transportation, um, in town. Lisa Manning also oversees the netco transportation from Boston. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of work. So I was really happy to see Lisa Marie do that shout out. Um, from, from Frank Kowalski, Principal, um, Principal of Glover School. Uh, he says that Dawn Whittier has been a fixture at Glover for over sixteen years. Dawn treats all students like they were her own. Dawn comes to work each and every day with such an infectious smile and positive attitude. She has a how can I help attitude and find solutions to all challenges presented. Dawn multitasks daily and no job is too small. She treats the staff and all visitors utmost professionalism. Dawn does not want credit for anything, uh, does not want credit for anything, as her joy comes from when everyone is happy and their needs are met. Two of her many positive attributes are her loyalty and her trustworthiness. This is evident by how much staff and community relies on her. Dawn is one of the main reasons why Glover is such a special place. Cool. And then from Scott Williams, uh, Principal at Village School. He's recognizing, uh, administrative assistant, Marian McKee. Uh, Marian, um, goes above and beyond for all, at all times for everyone, every day. She starts her day at Village at the crack of dawn, solving problems, covering classrooms, ordering supplies, working on schedule changes, all with a smile. She's professional, a team player, and an amazing collaborator. She is the glue at Village that keeps everything going smoothly and seamless. Our school cannot run as well as it does without her. She works for teachers, parents, community members, administration continuously throughout her day and week. She's joyful, fun to work with, approachable and helpful at all times, capital letters. Um, she has given over two decades of service to Village School and Marlboro Head Public Schools. Her work ethic and dedication to Village is unmatched and unwavering. We love you and appreciate you, Ms. McKee. For Matt Lavangi, that's school principal, a huge thank you to our seventh grade math teacher, Sarah Mattz, that's who, that's who's a, sorry, and Alice Fine, on the phone. Um, for their incredible work in planning and organizing last week's seventh grade trip to project venture. The thoughtful coordination and attention to detail helped create a tremendous day of team building for both students and staff. The day was a great success. Thanks for your dedication and hard work. Um, and from Michelle Carlson, the High School Principal Susan Shatford, in her role as AP Coordinator, has done outstanding work organizing and processing eight hundred and thirty-seven AP exam orders this year. Her dedication, attention to detail, and commitment to supporting students and staff ensures, ensure that every student has the opportunity successfully to participate in testing. She also was shouting out to Caitlin Fields, in collaboration with the MHS School Counseling Department, has partnered with Southern Hampshire University to offer dual enrollment opportunity for honors anatomy and physiology course. She worked closely with SNHU to align the curriculum and gain universal, university approval, ensuring meets their academic standards. As a result, the course is recognized as equivalent to biology two ten. A lot of students earn three university credits for a lecture and one credit for the lab for a total of four college credits upon successful application. That's, that's huge. We're excited about this opportunity, which many students are already taking advantage of. And finally, I want to shout out to Julia Ferrer, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Um, I was actually able to take some pride off because I, because of my, my, um, confidence in her, um, holding down the floor was gone. Her decision-making and her, um, ability to collaborate and communicate with all our folks involved. Uh, so I appreciate you and appreciate, um, you know, being able to have peace of mind. Uh, sure, that's, that's not an easy task. I can tell you from doing this for ten or eleven years, uh, I definitely don't often have that comfort level. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all that I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everything okay?
Yeah.
Hi.
Um, how about we take a real quick five minute break?
Hi, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me. It's Lisa Marie. I'm not sure if it's intentional, but you're muted. So we can't hear you. Well, I, I can sort of hear you, but people are saying they can't hear you.
So it should be okay. Is it, can people hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, thank you, Lisa Marie.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Okay, so, um, Kate, I'll turn this over to you. We want to talk about the approval of, uh, three particular policies.
Do you want to do, I can make a motion for each one and then we can discuss them one by one.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve, um, the changes to policy B and D H, public comment at school committee meetings.
A second. Oh, so moved.
So moved, so we need to.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so this policy revision is a recommendation by MASC. Um, deleting obscenities as a basis for terminating public comment. Um, and I, I think that if you read the full policy, the way this is really intended is that you can't term, we can't stop public comment if someone is using profanity. Um, we can if they are that we, because of those behaviors, which is otherwise covered in, so it's a recommended revision by MASC.
Yeah. So any further discussion? Okay, um, so we'll vote on the item, Kate.
In favor.
Melissa.
In favor.
Al in favor, the motion passes three zero.
Um, so the next one, I will make a motion um, to approve the policy revisions to policy BEH, use of electronic messaging by school committee members.
Second.
Um, so this is really a, an update to bring us into the twenty first century. Um, it's removing old practices where that seem to contemplate school committee members using personal email rather than a district email, um, or not having email at all. One of the additions is a requirement that we make emails available to school committee members. So it's just reflects that our emails are all archived to the district system.
Okay, uh, any discussion on this one? They will go to vote. Kate.
In favor.
Melissa. Al in favor, the, the motion passes three zero.
Um, so the next one, I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to policy BID, school committee member compensation and expenses.
Second.
Um, so this one, again, they're MASC, mostly MASC recommended changes for deleting language that isn't applicable to our municipality around session of school committee members, um, and then modifying the language around employment of school committee members by the district. Um, if you really kind of dig into the redlining there, there's MS, MASC recommendations, and then John um, further recommended that we make it a broader school committee members can be employed by the district in many states, which, um, the policies of committee.
Any further discussion? Uh, Jenny, ready to vote or?
No, you're ready.
Okay, so, um, Kate.
In favor.
Melissa.
In favor.
Al in favor, the motion pass, passes three zero. And our, uh, next item is around, uh, revoking policy BK.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to rescind policy BK, school committee memberships. Um, so this is another MASC voting nation. Um, it's a policy that provides the school committee can maintain memberships in school committee organizations. Um, and MASC recommended that districts remove the policy as just being unnecessary, won't we get all changed? Says.
Okay, any further discussion this morning? Okay, uh, we'll vote, uh, Kate.
In favor.
Melissa. Yeah.
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, Al in favor, the motion passes four zero. Our next item is around a second reading of middle school pathway exploration.
I'm sure Julie and I'll take it. So we're so, um, the background behind this is that, uh, the state's basically looking for us to have a policy, school committees to have a policy that outlines the fact that we have to make available the information for middle school students to avail themselves, age-based opportunities, vocational schooling, et cetera. Um, this policy basically, um, outlines our practice already. Policy, um, so it's really no different. So, for instance, if we have to, we have to allow our vocational schools to share their information with our students. We generally have, if they request lists of our, something, they, they soon, we have to write those, and then we generally have them, at least, at the very least, allow them to share their warehouse information. Um, there is some conversation about whether we come into the school and do, you know, some point show nothing or not. Um, that's not, that's the policy that just kind of practice, but, oh, so that's, that's the backbone for so, um, I'm sure, sure.
And really about our, we already have a longstanding partnership with OSX Tech. Um, so that is mentioned in here because it is our, our, our.
So that's, that's really, that's really an end of the chug sign. So, but it, whereas squipping the line. Be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to add anything, Julia?
All right, our next item.
We just want to, we collaborated with a lot of local school districts. Everyone's in the same position that we're in. Um, so one of many schools that are doing this, um, for a big event, and, um, so really strong, like confident, this reflects what other districts are doing, uh, especially districts of size.
So. Great.
Good. All right, our next item is, uh, domestic violence proclamation.
All right, um, there was a little confusion, um, going back and forth. I thought I'd submitted this to the chair, but yes, he didn't. So, um, or it didn't get into, um, folder on time. So it's something we work on a little bit. Um, but I just, we had discussed this back in, um, in November, I'm sorry, in, um, April, when we did the, um, sexual violence awareness, prevention, awareness month, um, that October is domestic violence awareness month. So, um, we had a local, um, citizen that came forward and asked us to consider this for October. Uh, the decision of the committee in April was to not do the October proclamation, we need open to wait. So, so we are, so it's submitted in there. Uh, I can meet it into the record if that's the desire of the committee, um, and then I will ask for a motion to approve the proclamation.
I ran it already.
Okay, and it's, and it's in the, it's in the public.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to, well, actually I will be. Yeah. Um, so the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October twenty twenty five says, whereas domestic violence is a pervasive issue that affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and communities with lasting and profound effects on survivors, families, and society as a whole, and whereas the month of October is nationally recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. A time to raise awareness, educate communities, and promote prevention efforts to end domestic violence. And whereas according to national statistics, one in three women and one in ten men experience some form of domestic violence in their lifetime, highlighting the urgent need for awareness, support, and action, and whereas organizations such as HAWK, which is known as Healing Abuse Working for Change, the National, um, Sexual Violence Resource Center, and the local crisis centers, which is our YMCA, provide vital services, advocacy, and education to support survivors and prevent future incidents. And whereas every member of our community can play a role in preventing domestic violence by promoting a culture of respect, consent, and safety, and by standing in solidarity with survivors. And whereas the Marlboro Public Schools joins advocates, survivors, and organizations across the nation in recognizing the importance of Domestic Violence Awareness Month and affirms its commitment to supporting survivors and working toward a future free from domestic violence. Now, therefore, we, the Marlboro Head School Committee, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Marlboro Public Schools and encourage all our community members to participate in activities, educational programs, and initiatives that raise awareness and foster a community dedicated to ending domestic violence. In witness thereof, we have here to sign their, that are even on the stage. Um, this is, there's a couple of typos in marriage. I didn't, basically didn't bring up the updated ones. So, um, there's just a couple of typos that need to be changed. So I'm going to ask if we do pass this tonight, that I'll hold off and sign, I think we can sign a clean version of it, but in, um, three. Still, so, um, there might be some discussion on this, but I will make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, uh, Jen.
In favor.
Kate.
In favor.
Melissa.
In favor.
Al in favor, the motion passes four, zero.
So I've got a clean coffee and that way also, um, assuming we're all here putting hand make, um, with everything. Together and I'll change the date to the thirtieth. So I'll put the corrected version in for the next meeting. Uh, so the public can see it. We won't deliberate or, you know, just sign.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. All right, so the next item is, uh, superintendent progress versus goals. Um, so this is the first step to the superintendent's evaluation. Um, so I just need to clarify from our last meeting, uh, I think in the last meeting I said John fills out a particular form. That's not the case. He presents his, uh, his achievement versus the goals typically in a number four, which he has done. Uh, the goals were placed in the Google Drive with forty-eight hours of notice. However, the progress was not uploaded until yesterday. So I'd like to ask the committee whether they're okay with John reviewing these without the two days' notice.
I, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
I mean, we're not voting.
No. Yeah, we'll talk about next steps after John discusses it. Yeah, we'll talk about next steps after John discusses his progress.
Okay, I appreciate you allowing me to move forward and I do apologize. I do my best getting them in there as soon as I could, so um it's it's true progress. So um there's three goals, there's professional practice goal, district improvement goal, and the student learning goal um that we were approved by committee last year, I have this intro on moving into this year. So just an overall all um consumption, uh professional practice goal is essentially consistent district-wide culture development of appropriate staffing patterns to meet the needs of our students. Talk about some inscription of the goal are, why they choose to go out and measure it. Um and then the second goal was district improvement goal, which was around doing tomorrow head school district improvement plan, which is also called strategic plan. I I like to term this improvement plan because we got school improvement plans that dovetail for this improvement plan. So I think just the common language around that um are uh I'll talk about a little bit more of it. That's that was one of my goals and I'll I'll talk about what the progresses towards that in a second. And the third goal was student learning goal, which was ensuring students have a voice in their teaching and learning. So we'll go back and do the progress to the goal. So um in regard to the professional practice goal around building appropriate staffing, um I'm just gonna be kind of what I what I get from the progress, we can talk about it. Um progress towards this goal has been moderate. The goal in hindsight was a bit broad and difficult to track. Progress effectively, I just want to be open and honest about that. Sometimes when we develop that that happens, right? Um it's too broad or are we actually not tangible in ways that should be. So, you know, um I'm not gonna make excuses for that, just is what it is. I think you don't look forward when I develop my goals for the next round. Well, I'm sure we'll have richer discussions about what those goals will look like and, you know, how how we measure. So um just want to share that first and foremost. However, ongoing discussions review of programming principles took place around the twenty five, twenty four, twenty five school year. Um and those conversations resulted in planning decisions made going into this school year. I work for our assistant superintendents, um this is Ray, Julia, and Mike, not to try and ascertain staffing efficiencies within different district programming, special education, E L L programming, general programming, so that we can determine the impact of staffing, not only on the overall budget, but more on the impact on student learning environments and how it informs student success. So that's a, that's an ongoing conversation. Um it's part of the goal because, you know, when I came into district, obviously, you were going into bargaining and of some, you know, talk about possible overrides in the future, things like that. So, you know, one of the first thing you said was let's let's solve the staffing patterns and programming. So we have done that um for last year and it's this year. Obviously, this year going into a budget season, we'll take a deeper dive into that, looking realistically more closely at each classroom in the district, how many staff in the classroom, how many students in the classroom, where can we figure out efficiencies as we go into budget season, so that we can start having conversations about how do we create and maintain a budget that are within the constraints of our contractual obligations. So um yeah, this is this probably kind of goal from last year, but it carries into this year and I'm into that. So I just wanted to share that part as well. Um this is an ongoing endeavor is um does not only do the needs of the students change, where our expectations of the students change, has been worked to increase rate of achievement. Um I have met with all the P T Os and P C Os, but I've only had very surface level discussions with them regarding staffing. And have not had a deep dive into garner uh specific input in regard to programming. So far, my goal was to really have those conversations discuss with the P T O's, we still as well their perceptions of staffing. That didn't happen at love on that intent. It's show, you know, um coming into the district, these things, you you just don't always know kind of how things kind of pan out. Um and I did not generate a survey, sorry. And my goal, I said, I was going to surveys quarterly. Reason to do last year was uh people were following surveys and a lot of people were talking about survey um fatigue and so that was part of the reason why I allowed surveys didn't happen in this regard. Um but not, not not the whole reason, I just, I didn't get that. Uh school culture shifts are underway, though. Uh this takes time to ensure that staff are on board with discussions and don't want me to affect changing change in your classrooms around each of the schools and to ensure alignment of expectations across the district. Ongoing collaboration with community partners, our administration team discussions and follow through by principals and district leaders is alive for the district to be more aligned from building to building, which is the basic basis for systemic cultural change. So that was like really the portion goal was kind of kind of we start developing some culture shifts. Um and in doing that, we have to have conversations with all stakeholders. We have to look at staffing, we have to look at programming, we have to look at patterns. Um so that part of that goal, I think we did really well on. Um the specifics, I think they talked about that, didn't know well on. You wanna go through each one? Do you want to go through all when you go back and talk about it?
There might not be any, does anyone have any questions as we go section by section? I feel a little better if you're okay with that. Someone have any comments, questions?
Clarify, these goals were set last October versus October twenty four to October twenty one.
And I think as we go through the the next phase of this, we will talk about what timeframe is for my votes. Sometimes October totally makes sense because it's the summer. And July to June makes sense, but then it kind of some sort of stuff and it's uh
On the your review of staffing. I appreciate the acknowledgement that you haven't made the progress that you hoped. Is it something that you think can be refined and continued as a goal for the coming year, or was it sort of not the great selection for the goal?
I think the, I think the goal was was good selection for the goal. I think the committee agrees that I think I think not not knowing the way and well enough to go that I would have for my own personal expectations. I I felt sort of my own personal expectations because I think I I didn't know the way I went along to say this goal might be a little bit too expansive, so it 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 should always be a goal. We always catch those things. Um I think going into next year and the following year, especially with the budgetary constraints we're likely gonna have. This, this makes a lot of sense to potentially look at for one of my goals going forward and how we can really provide some um ongoing deliverables so that it can be a for that while we're failing in that. But that's a suggestion. I haven't really gotten to all my goals yet. So I want to go to my evaluation first, you know. As you guys were looking for. That answer your question?
I mean, I think this one, I'm glad it disappointed that we haven't made more progress. I didn't see this last year because coming up on a difficult budget season. This would have been important information, I think, for us to have. So to the extent that we can push on this and make as much any progress that we can, I think will be important as we are entering the budget season.
Yeah, so I think um so a couple things. Uh I think that um like this goal was was for last year and for last year's budget. So we're sort of turning the page, whether this moves forward as a goal or not, we're going to see. Seven years of the school committee, seven years I've been trying to get a staff accountability report and a zero-based budget. A girl can only know. Um maybe we'll do that this year. But the point of what we had asked for with this, and I know there were a lot of strenuous circumstances last year without doubt. Um was to understand building by building and central department by central department. Every single resource we have and have it accounted for and have that ruling up to um in footing to um the number of students we have in each grade and each need. Um whether it's a class, you know, whether it's educator need, provider need, clinician need. What what whatever it is that is down to the granular level of the student we um I think this year, with the significant enrollment decline we've seen, um we are going we are responsible to the taxpayer of the town um to to do this. And I think, you know, we've, John and I've had these conversations and with Mike. Um so um going into our subcommittee, that's gonna be a big target of um what we're gonna be looking at. So um one question I did have in regards to your conversation with P T O's and P C O's, I guess I'm a little confused on sort of discussions with them regarding staffing. I don't I I if anything, I would think it would be the school advisory committees versus P T O.
Yeah, I think again, I think it was just, it was an opportunity to get one staple group to some um give somebody quite, and quite frankly, um we were having a conversation about school by coun- councils and stuff last year. I didn't know anything about that. I I when you guys were talking all that stuff.
You didn't have school guys.
Well, not like that. They weren't trying to say things. So when when those conversations were happening, I didn't I didn't have the understanding and developed those.
But that they, it's my statute.
But I guess when we develop the goals um that just form a part of the conversation, not that not that it's not a you know, you can look at state I just happened to fall very quickly into the P T O realm, so.
Then the reason why I said is because in the spirit of the statute of the S A C, that is the role of the S A C really is to, well, not the role. But they are, they are an advisory committee to the building principal whose job is to do this, right, is to build this. And it is also by its nature consists of um community members, staff members, and parents. Parents, so it would seem to be a logical way. Uh my only concern about the P T O's and P C O's is it limiting it to that is I would like to see surveys of all parents in each building, right, to really get a kind of a broad base of understanding, what is the experience from parents view? All of them in a particular building from their their students needs from staff.
So I think this will be a good conversation if 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 this becomes one of my goals to say to have those those benchmarks in there, right? We we didn't have that breadth of conversation last year, so I was kind of shooting a bit a little bit on that, on this goal particularly. Um so I think all the conversation and all viable conversation, quite frankly, what I try to, what I try to do is have ongoing updates to my goals, so we don't get to this point and say, oh my god. You know, um so I'm definitely gonna do that at an issue, not at least superintendent last year, I think, you know. I have all the things together, but um I I'm gonna, you know, work with the chair and vice chair to say, you know, I'm gonna like to do an update to my goals. We're gonna do that more regularly so that if I'm not on track, we can correct. If I'm on track, awesome. If I leave the goal really early, okay, it wasn't soft enough. If I'm not coming close to the goal, like way too lofty. Those are conversations that typically we had throughout the school year or throughout the evaluation process. So you know, a lot, a lot, a lot of things.
Well, we did do, I mean, I'm not, I guess I don't understand that because we did do a formative assessment halfway through. Um I'm, I I mean, I guess there's ways to when you're doing your updates, I guess, you know, that like I'm not thinking of the origin. We look to do like quarterly review. Is it gonna be involved?
So, so again, to, it might be what I've, what I've done previously, and it doesn't have to be done this way, but what I do is like, you know. Yeah, but not even one step in the month or whatever, say, here's where I think like, oh, so like, if I go number one, here's where my progress is, number two, here's my processes. Um and and that kind of takes the place of having to do the whole, the whole, you know, stoppage because it's on a more extended event. Maybe you can say it's me, that's great, you're on track, I know you're not on track, and we can have those conversations in the moment versus waiting to perform it and then going to something. It's just, it's more organic, more natural to do it that way. So, but yeah, we did the forward and then again that's just, but that doesn't mean you have to do it that way. A lot of conversations come up.
Are there any besides this narrative, are there any other backup that you want to provide? Is there any other, your data?
Um no, this is just a progress, this is just progress towards the goal. I mean, certainly, you know, you guys would, I think, so provide, that's fine. Um I think if, I mean, again, that's the reason I'm a little odd and all the things that I don't sell this.
Oh, I think so. I mean, we're here to do the, I guess I'm confused. We're here to do the final.
It's just a progress towards my goals.
I thought this, I thought this was the summative assessment we were doing in October.
So it is, it's the start, right? So it's superintendent presenting his progress towards those goals. And then we need to fill out, the next steps would be, we fill out those individual end-of-cycle assessments.
Right.
And then we have to combine those into a composite. And then that's what is presented to the.
Right, so I guess what my question was, so this is narrative. When I go to fill out that form, I like, are there any, is there any data that we can get to be helpful?
Yeah, no, that's my question, right. This is, right, this is John's chance to provide that and superintendent's chance to provide that before we then individually fill out this form. So obviously, you know you know, the more information support that, the better.
Like, I don't, I don't know what survey results you, surveys you did take uh or didn't inform. Um I don't know. I mean, I think, I don't know. The school culture, I I don't even, I mean, school culture was sort of part of this, that this is more, I guess, but this is more around staffing pattern. So I I don't know. It would just be helpful to have some data, who did produce a report, didn't have a round budget, right? So maybe provide that.
Uh ready for the next goal?
I am.
Okay.
Next goal, number two, um there's a district improvement plan, so um I'll just read the narrative and I'll kind of explain a little bit more. So the updated district improvement plan, and I didn't put it in the in the packet because it figured the pack, having a pack without the, without the narrative around it, it make a lot of sense, but I guess certainly we have to, we have to do that um but I'll explain this first. So the updated district improvement plan, I'll also refer to as a strategic plan is well underway. The draft plan was developed and then it has based on all heads plan for success, which is due to expire next school year. We've talked about this several times in the meetings. Uh the Red Vamp dip encompasses six overarching goal areas. The first would be curriculum instruction and evaluation. The second is teacher quality and professional development. The third is human resource management. The fourth is student support program and services. The fifth is leadership governance and communication. And the final is uh sixth one is financial and asset management effectiveness and efficiency. Those are six overarching areas. Under each area, there's there's uh benchmarks, and then the benchmarks also have objectives and they outline areas of improvement strategies. So you kind of say, here's the, here's the benchmark for the improvement strategy meets that um objectives um towards the overarching goal. So you do the improvement strategy, the person's person to person's responsible, uh resources needed, the assessment. So it's in chart form, right? Again, I shared this with the committee and I'll, and I'll do that again once I have um the next phase ready to go. Um so it it basically outlines for all six areas, under each area, there's goals and objectives, and under each objective, there's all those, those are the areas of improvement strategies, persons responsible. So altogether, these create a plan that will encompass the ways in which the district will improve and grow. Each individual school improvement plan will dovetail with the district improvement plan. Going forward, all the plans, when they refer to an evil life, then I'm gonna weigh versus static. So a lot of times, you'll do strategic plans, district improvement plans. Put a nice neat binder, the chair is, when I shop, that's it. Um I've never operated that way, so realistically what's gonna happen this year is because the new district improvement plan is slated to start next year. School improvement plans are being done by the principals, basically still refer to the student success plan. And we'll have some, some um elements of the the newly, newly proposed district improvement, because we've had a conversation all the way through the administrator. So they're pretty well aware of um the areas of the district improvement plan. They have given their inputs of district improvement plan. Uh we can't be necessarily all benchmarks and goals, but they are improved yet, but it will start to dovetail. And then uh next year, when the new district improvement plan is in place, that following strategic plan will fall. Uh there's always, when you're doing the new one, there's always that one year that you spend when you kind of want to align it, but I I would, in my experience, once you have this improvement plan that's meaningful and ongoing and not static. Um it 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 moves forward pretty smoothly because you're already having conversations about what's gonna change. And I'm in strategic plan and district improvement plan before you get to where this So where we are in the process is, uh we've got an input from all the central administration, the principals, the leadership team. Uh what all the major team, and then they push that out to staff. And then get that pushed out to uh and I should be ready for the school meeting for your first go-through and see where we are. Um so all those phases happen that I bring to you, you look through it, you provide whatever feedback, and it should really follow meetings because it's a lot of documentation. Um and then, you know, you get your, what whatever change it needs made. Point, um school committee's ready to prove it that this improvement plan is approved by the committee. Set to go for twenty, the next one is starting twenty seven in the month of twenty nine. Um so that's the plan. My my hopeful plan is to get this, get uh proposed final copy to you January, you know, January-ish timeframe, so we have time to get it squared away. Um so it's all ready to go for that's fine. I knew, I knew this wasn't any dumb line, I told it back. So I didn't, when I said I'm getting one where, it's it's a lot of work. Um and take all the steps. And I think I mentioned this before, I do it, I've done it this way be- because I can get a ton of, you know, what, doing it electronically like this versus having a committee of like fourteen people, like they are not represented. So all leadership team, all the staff, all the carriers, all the committee will have an opportunity to find. So all leadership team, all the staff, all the carriers, all the committee will have an opportunity to play a part. So it doesn't mean that every single person that questions, but comes part of the plan, it means that, and there's a lot of. Seventy people might say, oh, this needs to be. Um, maybe some things that just don't exceptionally. It's an encompassing process, the reason all time, I, I feel like I'm in a real place for going. I can answer any questions.
I think you mentioned that you shared your draft of it with the committee at some point, then, if you did that just before. With some of us joints, I think it would be helpful to see it. For purposes of.
Yeah, so I, so I can do that, and what I, what I can share, I remember to do that tomorrow, I can share with you, and again, I think. This wasn't the meeting to go through it all, so I purposely didn't, but I'll, I will share with you, what you'll get is the. I haven't finished putting in all of the missions, I've got some of it, I haven't put it all in yet, so you'll get the last version, but you'll be able to see more and more, so. Um, would it be helpful to put the student success plan in there too, so you can see the differences, I don't know, I mean, if you have on the website, someone's. Okay, uh, I, I mean, I don't, I, I don't like, uh, it's vast and different, let's just. Six page document, super long time. Anyways, but it's, it's, it's way more. Okay, all right, so we go to the dip.
Um, one thing that would also, I think would be helpful is if you could provide a suggested timeline. Um, for the, for the, you're suggesting for the approval process, we probably could deliberate that, but I think we should have. Start to talk generally about, you know, timeline for, um, when you're gonna, it sounds like January for a initial. Draft document to us, um, maybe a couple of iterations of deliberations, and that may be. A suggested date on when, whether it be some first to vote to prove that, maybe that's March or April, just also given. Um, you know, what the calendars look like, yeah, during, or maybe not, maybe we, send it to after town, I don't know.
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, as long as it's done, it's, I. We walk, when staff walk out of school, to whatever it is this year.
I mean, one of the things I would like to see as well, just to think about, not necessarily for the person this, but in the process is plan. You know, the timeline, potential time, timeline or calendar for, but also communication, you know, how. And then, I don't, it doesn't need to be time, but what, how you think, oh, this is gonna roll out, because that's really important. To, it's how you communicate that, to, where we are, whatever, together. Um, for the next year's school committee, the community, you know, obviously the school community, greater community, staff. Parents.
Okay, uh, this is speaking to next steps too, but, um, probably a part of it all, but. I'm not a big fan of how this is a fairly linear process, and the school committee is at the very, very end. You don't see a lot of people doing a lot of good work, and then it gets to the school committee. And then, let's say we have some appropriate major changes, I think it kind of disheartens all the people that put all this time and get it to this point. So to me, the point is, I think the sooner that you can involve us in certain things, I think will be a, a better process.
Fair point, and maybe in, kind of reflecting on that point. Uh, what I can say is that a lot of what's in the proposed plan is born of. School committee conversations and discussions, so the whole budgetary part of it is clearly more of budget discussions and conversations. The professional development part is clearly more of, we want something we talk about. The work that Julie does and bring back to the committee, so a lot of it, you'll see in there, it's not, it won't be a surprise, because we have had conversations. Um, this is just memorializing a document that I didn't see, um, and so we, we all will work on it. And quite frankly, there's, just like anything else in any plan, there's, there's things that, you know, we'll achieve relative quickly. There's things that will be ongoing throughout the whole district improvement, and so forever, um, that's just the nature of this kind of thing, um. But I think, yeah, I'll share, I'll, I'll drop that in, uh, for you guys to see tomorrow, uh, so you can kind of start looking at it, and, you know. I, I would, I would welcome it, but I mean, I don't, you know, I have to waste that, and get inputs, I mean, I'm happy to. What's the next one?
Yes.
Okay, so the student, uh, learning goal was the having a voice in their teaching learning, students having a voice in their teaching learning. Um, I feel like there's been significant progress toward achieving this goal, so my, my goal was to make sure that the principals and the school leadership. Was, uh, finding ways to hear and find and have student voice be a part of what they're doing, and they feel the principles. I mean, in varying degrees, different ways, I feel the principals, um, took this goal on, and they did a nice job of. Of making sure that at the different appropriate grade levels, that they're garnering feedback from, from the students. We saw some of that in spotlights, um, if some wasn't looking more evident than others, when, when the schools brought in students to share, um. And we've had a conversation this year, all principals were like, I love this goal, it's, it's great, they're already working on stuff for next year, this year and next year already, so. I feel that this goal, um, was well received by the administrative team, they took it on, they find it as meaningful. Uh, it's important for students to have a voice to learn, so, um, all the principals have embraced the goal, and have sought ways to enhance student voice in their buildings. Great in age appropriate ways, school spotlights, school meetings, last year, and some of the ways in which students make their voices heard. How they participate in teaching, work in the process, some of the ways, I mean, I've met with, um, student groups, um, I've, I've, I've overprogrammed students. And some of the students of high school, um, some of the students have been partly in distribution, we've had those conversations. Um, obviously, with all schools, we have a conversation, kids, and the classrooms and stuff, um, so, you know, I always try to find ways to, um. To have those conversations with students, uh, and I think just kind of how I do that in a more ongoing way. Uh, I'm really kind of leaning away from surveys for that, for a lot of reasons that, you know, um. I just think, in this day and age where, you know, everyone's spending a lot of time on stuff, it's just, it's, it's more frustrating than not, so I'd rather have conversations with kids. Or think of it that way for the most part, except for specifically. Uh, survey, um, so through ongoing meetings and discussions, administrators have all already indicated they are best in continuing to enhance student voice across the district. And we work on this goal, I mean, more specifically, it starts with a school year, giving students a voice in their educations, parents enhancing learning experience, while possibly in the past. Creating forms by which to exchange ideas and providing opportunities for students, so, again. Most of the goal is me making the, kind of overseeing, the leadership team in their development of student voice. I think that's very transformative, we all, um, and then my own, my own. Meeting students and stuff, this is, this is part of the, the goal, really focused on.
Um, questions on the school?
Um, I agree with you on, on the narrative, um, and I did like this goal this year, because it was, I think, a, yeah, serious need. Um, I have said, you know, I personally would like to see, um, particularly at the high school. Um, maybe i- if there's a way, look for a little bit more of the formality of it, whether it's the student council. The student representative, I mean, I think there's some, some opportunities, particularly with the high school students, where they are, um. To have a. More formal way for them to be self-governing, and then through that self-governance, if that's the right word. Um, to be able to communicate, and to have their voice that way, I think it's a great, you know, so, I, and again, that's, that's the building level, but. I mean, I think they ensure leadership, that's.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and I, yeah, and I want to bring it, I think, again, we have ongoing conversations that the team. Uh, the other, the other goal that I have. You know, the administration shares a lot, and a lot, I think, but the learning walk also happens last year, um, getting very well received, because. These principals go to each other's schools, they see, like, oh, that's really cool that you're doing that school, I'll just feel that and make it my own. Uh, so there's a lot of back and forth there, and a lot of that, uh, I noticed, and you can jump, but if you want to, Julie is. When we're having conversations, the admin team, and they're sharing out their learning logs, uh, it really highlighted some of the cool things. That some of the principal were doing in regard to student voice, because they weren't really aware, until they saw it in the school, so. Because, you know, the other principal's not coming to see the spotlight from that school, so they didn't get to see, like, I always, I've been using various, various leaderships, even around. Pre-mo example, right, the other, other principal of the office, so, cool, like, I, I'll kind of replicate that, like, you know, so. Those conversations are happening in organic and meaningful ways, which are really cool, and, um, so all those things are happening, you know, it's kind of hard. Write that out on a thing, but like, that's the stuff that's happening, um, every single time we have a conversation, that, it's, we say, hey, share our, even the learning logs, and. It's, it's really a conversation, there's, there's a lot of that sharing.
I think it sort of speaks to the success of this goal, that it's not just like it done and dusted the years over, we've. You know, given students a voice, what's the next task, and that it's, you know, sort of, the work is continuing on. Within the schools and in your ministry team, I think is a great.
Yeah, thank you, and it was funny, because we were, we talked about it last time in the meeting, this is, you know, we're getting some super learning goal, like, is that what the? This belong in professional practice, this belong in there, you know, so we had those conversations, I think it might fit, you know. And any of those, you can kind of make it anywhere, but we had those conversations, so I was like, does, does everyone want to, you know, make this goal, you know, say, hey, oh. Can't say, have we, and it was like, absolutely, it was just, like, there's no hesitation, and it wasn't just because, oh, it's a goal that we can. Forced it, they were looking for ways for the hands. So, I really signed it on it, it's, it's kind of, it's always been interesting, so, at all of those, that was.
There, no ones of questions? Okay, so the, the next step is now we fill out the end of cycle assessment. Um, and I'd just like to ask, how much time would folks like to have in order to do it? By the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't know how much I will have to give. Um, was just in the past, it kind of, it kind of looks like, it got a little weird when we changed the, um, election, but it used to be that. You know, we would normally do superintendent evaluations in the late spring, and we would have, um, and, and sometimes it would. Go over until after the election, it used to have may elections, so sometimes the evaluation would be, and often the newest member. Yeah, just because, I mean, that's your choice, I guess, if you've got a parent here, you could, whatever, but, um, you know, not having had a full year, whatever. And I think that new members have been here, you know, a bit longer, because we're off cycle.
Yeah, but I, I think. That's, that's a little bit, you know, I don't know how much. Few months, you know, I think, you might have. I think, um, I, I just want to be very clear, I, you know, I think the evaluation process is important. I take it to heart, I, I do, it's like on the good, bad, and ugly, um, so that's how I can grow, but I also recognize that. This is the fourth iteration of school cases, and then it, I'll just say that, I think it's, so, I would say, I think.
Every year is been.
Of course, but I mean. Four iterations in the year, like, for once, so, what I would say is that I would appreciate any input into the, into, you know. As little or as much as you feel comfortable with, and, you know, I, I, I can't tell you to do, but I would say, you know. And I've only had five conversations with John, I don't really feel comfortable at all, right, that's fine. Have a bit more, so you may be able to say, hey, I can speak to this, because I've had this conversation, I'm, I'm high end, I'm fine with whatever. Members of the committee feel comfortable with, I.
Well, depending on how we, if we do this in, if compiling this together.
That's the next thing we'll discuss.
Discuss, if we do that in a session, that's where also that can happen, right, so that's, like, everyone can fill it out, and then when we do the compilation. Uh, we can, yeah, we can talk about, and you can, someone may say, well, you know what, I don't really know, so I'll defer to the folks who work with him, and, or. This has been my experience in the last three months, et cetera, et cetera, and that goes into the compilation.
Yeah, so I think, John, John hasn't said the right word, whatever you're comfortable with, if you have something to add. Please.
Other point, otherwise don't worry about, you know, leaving something behind.
Uh, through the chair, I think also that, you know, realistically. Anomaly of the year, for a whole bunch of reasons, but you were also in, right, now that changed, you know, that became primitive, but. You know, normally an interim, normally you don't evaluate an interim, I don't think, typically an interim superintendent. So, that status changed partway through, so it's kind of all a little bit.
Really, really honestly, there's a violation, we'll be a lot on my fault, because I think. So, you know, yeah, we all have much better understanding of what I bring, and as expecting from me, um. So I would imagine that the goal will be more, or, plus, they will organize a lot of.
But, so as Jen mentioned, you know, so, I appreciate everyone will have their summaries done by the, the next meeting. And as Jen was saying, you know, there's a couple of options, right, primary options, one would be that we then create a composite. Together, I know a lot of us, or, you know, you may assign a person or process to go off and create that composite, and then bring it back to the committee. Yeah, I think there's pros and cons to both, I had a recommendation, but I'd like to hear from other committee members. I believe Janet, the last meeting, she strongly, we're suggesting that we do it all together, so I don't know if that's changed.
It has not changed. I think, one, for transparency, clearly, because the, the issue, and I've, I've participated in both ways. And the issue with compiling it in behind closed doors, it would be, say, two members would come together, they would take the five evaluation forms. To this previous point, we, there's no opportunity in that way for, you know, if you were not, when you were not in the compilation, um, team. You can't express, you know, your, I mean, you can write it out, I guess, but your, your limitations as well as your, you know, role. Uh, but it's also done behind closed doors, so two people come together, two members come together, they compile the five. They read them over it, and they create a document, it's a compilation of the scores, the narratives, and then come back and present it to the. I, I don't understand it, presented to the school committee, and then the school committee, I believe, would vote it, um, or not, you know, but so, but it's. It's not in the spirit of transparency, it's not done in open, versus if we five of us come together and we are, you know. I, I suggest it doesn't be, it's not during a typical business meeting, we would do it in a later, off meeting or an afternoon, but. We talk, we go through it, we talk about it in public and hear what our thoughts are, and then it's just, all the final thing is, is just a summary of our. Discussions in scores.
Yeah, I think it's also too, when you, when you get, like, I'm hearing someone say something, oh, I forgot about that, or, you know, like, you know, it sparks something else, so. Sounds like a love of Canadian is to do it together.
I mean, Henry's not here, you know, if you feel strong, you can. You know, can you do that?
So, in that, in that. Way, is that maybe coming together, a conversation, and then me in the conversation, or not in the conversation? I, I, I just asked him, I don't care anyway, but like, sometimes like. But I can say, sometimes sitting there, listening to everybody, and I talk about it, as this is the one here, um.
Typically, the superintendent is not in here.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's. No, no, that's fine, I should, I should sit in both, and, been in both, I think, is that, um, I don't. I will say this is a fantastic skin, so I, I don't, I don't, I know, I know what I do well, I think, and I know what I. So nothing should be a surprise, but, um.
Plus, the salt process is so unbelievably monkey, like, it's just, it's all done. Is the typical process that we would all need, compile. The composite evaluation, and then bring it to a business meeting and vote it there, so that's the time when it's sort of John sees. And we would vote, but it doesn't have to be.
I would get it ahead.
You would get it ahead, um, and I, I would be surprised if there would be any, you know, if there were going to be any surprises. We've seen another, you know, district, if that stays out, I don't know, there would just be a surprise, so, no, normally, we would, yeah, we would provide it to John. And then we would, in the agenda, I, this is how it's been in the past, the agenda, it is presented to the public, I mean, I believe it's. Clearly the chair would just sort of read it or outline it, and then we vote it, um, and it, and it's, you know, fifteen. I mean, I just think if that's the timeline, then. It's not necessary, if I didn't for John to sit there and listen to us all. Talk about it.
Just want to make sure, I want to know what expectations, I'll be there, I'll be there, if you want.
The only question I have is, where do the new goals come in, is that a separate discussion?
I think that's after the evaluation, simply we do that. So, what I'm hearing is, if we could have, by the next meeting, the thirtieth, we'll have individualists or some style. Um.
We actually, it doesn't, it's not meeting dependent, really.
No, well, just, unless we don't want to set up this special.
We could set it up before, or, they set it up next week. People can have it done.
Yeah, if people have it done, so, do we want to shorten it? All right, so.
I just wondered for Henry, yeah, we probably should.
All right.
What if you send out a survey? What if you send out a survey, um, for time rate?
I could do a little.
Yeah, I would suggest, I mean, let's put it this way, it is October fifteenth, I mean, maybe we. Shoot for the November sixth meeting to be the meeting we present the info, the. The, uh, evaluation, so sometime between now and November sixth. That we're, I guess, a call workshop.
So not necessarily have a part of my evaluation just on the thirtieth, but like the sixth, you guys will have already met. And have a discussion.
Unless you think we can do it by the third, it seems.
Seems kind of exciting.
That seems enough with Henry not being here, yeah, um, I think maybe have an initial conversation with Henry. This time, you might look like. Maybe if you catch.
And be ready, we could do it.
Yeah, alright, so sometime even thirty or six would be the goal. For the vote and the presentation.
Alright, I appreciate everyone's input around that. It's Milan, we move on to the next agenda item, which is. Our, Alice, committee goals, uh, the next steps. So, at the last meeting, I was asked to, the potential facilitation with our goals. Um, so I reached out to Alicia, uh, Mallon, uh, from MASC. And after discussing with her, we kind of felt that we're pretty close. Uh, and probably can finish our goals without facilitation. In fact, I want to say this. Uh, in fact, after looking at our goal, she said. These are great, I like that you all added, who wants the goal, I'm totally stealing that. Um, she also provided, I believe it was two other districts' goals, because I think we were also talking in the last meeting about seeing some examples of other, of other schools. So, um. Again, it's, it's, it's the will of the committee, but, um. I think we're pretty far along, and they're pretty good goals, um, and again.
The only thing I would say is, I, I will make this comment, because we had a good discussion last time, I. Have some fundamental. Differences in terms of some of the ones that are discussed, I felt like. And I said this at the end, that. Somewhere in our goal, I don't know how many goals we're going to have, but see, this is a four. That, like, two of them should be within our purview, what our responsibility. Either, uh, you know, budget for sure, um, in, in either policy or oversight superintendent, I'm not sure that's supposed to take away at the last meeting. We had discussions around. Backing our roles is one of our goals, I don't agree with that, I'm just one person, so certainly, you know, we very well get outvoted. So I don't know, I, I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I do think, I do think they, they, they do need some work, and I think some people talked about that in the last meeting. This is an area where I think it might make sense if we. Task a person or persons to kind of, because I, I think there were clearly some that could be come out. Right, and, uh, there were some that probably could use some more detail, right, around kind of adhering to the SMART goals framework. Uh, and I don't mind too, if they're, you know, we, when we're. Potentially delegating, uh, folks to do this, that. We ensure that they're looking at kind of the three areas that we are mostly responsible for, right? And you see, policy, evaluation, and then budget. But I, I feel.
The goal, some of those goals didn't have, wasn't that, that's what, that was my.
No, I'm saying that I, I would not mind if we give that as, as input to whoever wants to kind of combine.
I don't know that I agree, again, I'm one person, I think we should be doing this.
I like to be exam, one of the examples of the other school committee goals, that kind of. It does a little bit, which I'm describing, or they ladder up to kind of the many goals and the district goals, and I think that could be a way to say like, hey, if this is our north star that we're trying to impact. If the goal doesn't support this, then like, it probably shouldn't be a goal, that could be a way to. Filter towards making sure that. And that they don't. That they're not as supportive of that.
Well, that would mean, sort of trying to. Combine both, when you say district goals, right, that is probably one superintendent goal. And school committee goals, should we be doing those together?
Or is the school committee purview, I guess.
I mean, one of the things, I, I talked about last time, and I actually wanted to talk to John about this, um, as well is. You know. Nowhere in here do I see maximizing student achievement, so somewhere in the learning goal and in the school committee goals, it needs to be. Student achieved. However, we wanted to find that, I have no idea how to do that. And I, you might have some thoughts on that, you know, as far as the school committee goal as well as your goal. Um, so, I don't know. Because there's nothing in our. Potential goals that talk about it.
Yeah, clearly, I think there needs to be something, I've always thought it would be, would be more of the superintendent central administration schools towards that.
I think it's severe.
I, I'm not against that, Jim, but again. It's funny, we're talking about, we want to kind of stick in our swim lanes of policy. You know, superintendent evaluation, etc., and then student success is not one of those, right?
No, but it would come under, you know, I can see.
It should be.
Superintendent, yeah.
I mean, I'm having to say the goals, like, what their last time in charge is. Consolidate them such that they fit under those three things, and, or in that, for us to talk about. I guess, what are we thinking in terms of timeline, or we want to go back to the drawing board and say. Great. We're going to come up with a new goal that, uh, directly supports one of these.
Well, we do a working like a workshop. Yeah, I think we could probably try to do that.
I think we, you know, work went into preparing. The goals that were brought to our last meeting, we've gotten feedback from MASC that they were. Good goals or those starting points. Um, so I don't. Especially given that we are also needing to meet, you know, comply with superintendent's evaluation. You know, I think if there's an option where, whether it's. That Melissa takes them and kind of. Comes back with version, she's pointing for a discussion with many, or. Everybody takes their own goals and goes back to drawing board, I think there's some different ways to do it. Um, you know, do you want to bring forward suggesting goals?
I would like to workshop it with other committee members.
Is there a way we could do both, perhaps? Have some, so for our tech, I'm, I'm trying to act with a little bit of a sense of urgency, because they're on, on goals, right, they, they should be in place by now. So I'm wondering if maybe we could task someone to bring to the October thirtieth meeting, maybe some refinements that we've all discussed. But then we spend an hour at the ten thirty, we allocate an hour of the ten thirty meetings for us to do the workshop. On the refined goals, I guess, I feel that'll get us just a little further along in the process, but still does not. But still takes into account all five of us, hopefully. Working on the, you know. The goals at once.
I did, sorry, not to interrupt, I just want to be my total thirties where we have. That's going to be you.
Yeah, I don't think it's just.
To do something super.
Because why don't we, why don't we try and have this done as soon as possible?
Well, the goals can also be. Offside goals too, even if in November to November, but I mean, it doesn't have to be me. A school year goal. The other ones weren't. Technically either.
I mean, I suppose one option is that if we. Table it a little bit to November, and we're developing our goals, maybe more in conjunction with John's goals, so if we're talking about things like. How are we measuring student achievement? You know, I think that there is a. Much more robust conversation to have there about who. Who's responsible for that goal. Um, so maybe if we're trying to do them together once we. Leave this superintendent.
Potentially in, in that line. I think, in, in light of that thinking, similar to how I just explained by student learning, like, you know, I was kind of over. Seeing, you know, our team, the goals, it's supposed to be something, if it's similar to like. To achieve a goal of some sort. I don't test with your goal, what comes, how do we manage, make sure the job keeps that goal.
Why don't we workshop both goals together?
Yeah. Or do separately, but I was hearing, I'm going to make sure I was hearing correctly, that was something we wanted to workshop around this also. And maybe we do both, no, I, is that we all comfortable with that?
I mean, I, my preferred way of working is to just do things efficiently as possible, so like, as much facing as the meeting. Allows us to do, so that's my preference.
But it also is a committee, right, and so, yeah, the committee work is not always. Efficient. Issue, but, um. I think, I, I think that generally, as a group. Working, workshopping it. Anything like this, any big, um, you know, kind of project, I think, my experience is that you end up with a better product.
Uh, let me, let me ask another question around is. Are we all comfortable if we're into Wellington November before we finalize some set of goals? And I ask that because if we are, then I think we'll take the time to do that.
I know. I think it's better to take the time. To make sure that we're, you know, looking at the goals that are. Going to be achievable and going to need all, and. You know, we had a. Big transition. The hard, you know, some things were delayed waiting for a new member, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Maybe, how about we. Like the idea, maybe we, we have a workshop, we're sitting with one of them anyway. And again, the primary purpose of it would be for the evaluation to pause it, but. You know, if there's time willing, we start that process in that meeting, and I think it'll become clear whether that was a good idea. Or not, so I'll, I'll do that, and I'll sort of, this works, you know, workshop to, to do both.
So, I mean, typically, the school committee goals typically are done in sovereignty. So we're way off cycle from that, so we theoretically. If you wanted, if this committee wanted to continue that. You could do, like, a November, December, whatever goal, and then you do like a halfway point in summer.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be here.
So I'm just, it's, it's an idea, and then you're almost like reevaluating, just so we're on track, you could. You could tweak it. Um, or also if you could get back into that, some of the two, because that's really what genuinely the sovereignty is.
Alright, so I think we're. Understand a little of the committee, I'll move forward with that. Okay, um. Per policy, uh, BD, um, the committee chair was subject to approval by the committee, will appoint the subcommittee chair and its members. So I think we've spent a lot of time on subcommittees, but the one thing we did not do was vote on chairs for each of the subcommittees. Um, so that's something I'd like to, we can accomplish that tonight. Um, and I guess my, my process would be if, you know. The subcommittee would be the first to say, hey, we'd like this person to be the, the chair, then so we, you can vote on that. Uh, I guess, number. Possibilities, a committee may say, a subcommittee may say, I'd like a little more time, and we'll get back to it at the next meeting, so. Um, and I'd like to start with, is there, um. I know Henry's not here, but is there, can we, are there any committees that are ready to say? This should be our chairperson, the two, the two. Chairs or two committee members on that.
The committees that I have been on. We, the budget committee hasn't met. Um, the policy committee hasn't discussed it, so we, it would have been an open meeting violation for there to have been any discussions or developments. Um, but it wasn't on the agenda, so, um, maybe we should be tasked with. Do they have our agenda? Um, or the chair just decides.
Yeah, I mean, I. I hope that's a last resort, whereas the chair has to say it's this person, or I prefer the, the team itself to say, we, we'd like this person to be the chair. Uh, so, that's fine, uh, we can.
Every night I had a, while communication with the committee leaving last survey. This was in China for us, and he said, chair.
Well, he would at least have one chair. He would like to be the chair.
He would like to.
I have no idea for facility work.
Yeah, so maybe that one makes sense.
And I don't, I don't want to be chair anymore.
I mean, that makes it so much easier exercise.
I. Probably should be chair of budgets. Just given, you know, just to get, yeah. Um, I don't need to apologize. At all.
Alright, so, um. Maybe we'll get off facilities just for, for when Henry's. Present, I don't, because I don't know if that's his.
Well, I don't want to be the chair. So I guess that's a good point, you, or you could ask him, and if he wants to be chair, great, if he doesn't want to be the chair, then you need to decide.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Jen is the chair of the budget subcommittee. Discussion.
Yeah, we're meeting Friday.
I'm sorry.
We're meeting Friday.
Jen.
Uh, in favor.
Kate.
In favor.
Melissa.
In favor.
Al in favor, motion passes forty zero. I'd like to make a motion that Kate is the chair of the policy subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Alright, uh, Jen.
In favor. In favor.
Listen.
In favor.
Al in favor, the motion passes four to zero. And, um, I'd like to make a motion that Henry be the chair of the communications subcommittee.
Second.
Discussion. Jen.
But he in favor.
Kate.
In favor.
Melissa.
Favor.
Al in favor, motion passes four to zero. Okay, um.
So if you talk to Henry, then he's okay, that then you can just probably come back for the next meeting. He doesn't plan.
Forward pending his.
Yeah, I mean, we devoted him, I mean, I, I, I think it should. I'm happy to vote him as chair, I want to be respectful.
Yeah.
Um, and that'd be two chairs, and he, you know, he may have some.
Yeah. Alright, we'll wait, and, and, uh, we'll put it on the agenda. Ten thirty meeting. Okay, um. Any new business?
Yeah, so I was late because I was at the open meeting training. For you to go to, um. So I missed the coverage, I think, did you cover the. Planning board. Presentation last night?
It's in the.
Okay.
Sorry, I can, I can do.
Well, uh. I just had a comment, but yes, no, 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 go ahead, no, I think it, it will help to put it in.
Yes, sorry, I meant, I meant to do that in my day. Um, so we had the planning board meeting last night to talk about the lights, the type of field. Uh, I presented the letter. On behalf of committee, and our conference presentation, it was creative. Drafted on. Also, yeah. Fires, uh, after much discussion and deliberation on planning board. He didn't actually agree to move forward with allowing. Perfect feeling lights be utilized up to eight hundred and eighty nights for school years, between the fall and the spring, and the PA system be used, uh. A dozen times, which is. Solitary. On agreement, um, so. Now, it needs to go to the zoning board, and the zoning board needs, I shared this with the committee, right, I shared an email, um, just so there was some context. Um, for needs to go to the zoning board, my understanding is that that has to come. Yeah, we have to, I can school make your discussion vote, ask it before the zoning board, uh, they recommend having legal counsel, um. All applications, it's an application process to the zoning board, um, I'll share that. Anywhere application. Anyway, then share committee, so that, um, it's, it's my understanding, the legal or legal person is. Uh, follow up patient, and then. Maybe set up a conversation about voting. On to, to go in zones, or it's not like.
Yeah, so, uh, just had a couple of comments on that, I think, um, that process was a little, um, flawed. And I'm going to suggest going forward, the zoning board, because zoning board, planning board, process is exactly the same, so there's no, there really is no difference. Thing, the school committee clearly has to vote. Um, before the application goes in, we should have voted the application last, running last night, because it was a new application. We are the applicants. John's our designated, could be an attorney, it could be, he's our designated, but we, we are the applicants, and, and we shouldn't be represented at those. Things as well, so I think we need to be. And, and we shouldn't be represented at those meetings as well. So I think we need to be, you know, well aware of what's going on timing wise when we're in front of them. Um, you know, I know Kate, you said, spoke last night, but we, we need, it needs to be at the vote of the committee. In other words, like maybe needs to vote to say, chairs and attend and speak, vice chairs, whoever it is, and this is what they're going to say. Um, because that's that's how this is supposed to work. So I think that from the zoning, when we go through the zoning process, we should probably make sure we do that. Um, and we probably should have also had an interim planning board, but even as a minute. Um, I did want to also say that after the meeting, so I went to that portion and I did not stay the rest of the meeting and I, um, was, um, uh, met some of the butters, um, actually, um, outside, um, the room and had a, a conversation with several, several folks. And I felt that, um, I should at least share some of this with, with the committee. I, so earlier in the summer, when we went through this process, I, I did meet with the folks that were proposed this, right? We wanted this and I agree with it. I think this was the right application, the right thing to do. But I also think we have an obligation to be good neighbors to the folks who are also frustrated. You know, the neighbors that are feeling great. So I did have a conversation. I encouraged the folks that I spoke to, 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 to speak to the superintendent. Um, I feel strongly that we need it, my opinion, we need to show that we are good neighbors, um, and that we have lines of communication open under proper protocol is through the superintendent. Um, so I encourage, you know, encourage that. And some of the things that I heard, um, again, this is from a, you know, a small group, but but important because there were butters is that, you know, I think there's some issues that go beyond just the lights. You know, there's issues around neighbors who have, you know, students presumably parking in front of their driveways. Um, there's a lot of, in the morning, a lot of garbage that's left over from coffee cups and big old things and stuff like that. So I think there's just a lot of stuff. And I think again, I encourage to speak to superintendent because those are the things that I think this administration can work with our student body, you know, to just be aware. Because it's probably all really is. Um. There are a lot of complaints, I guess, that have gone to the police and which are better served probably coming, you know, to the school building administration and superintendent. So that's all I wanted to share with the committee. Um, I also made it clear that they can come to school for any needs, which some of those folks from there, they don't a lot of them have kids in the district who didn't know that they can come and speak at public comments. So, um, I think it's important for us to show that while we really want to be able to accommodate, this is really important asset here for the student athletes, for the athletes of our town. Um, we want to be good neighbors.
I think it's important to note that John met that contingent of neighbors and heard, I think, a lot of these same concerns and my hope is that that is not the end of the discussion and that it will be an ongoing collaborative process to make sure we addressing concerns which really had little to do with lights.
Yes, yeah. I mean, that is part of.
It's not, not that, that's not part of it.
But it's a, it's a whole thing, you know, going on and I can understand, but I can't. The other thing that, um, very related here a little bit was that the planning board also dictated that the conditions will be the, 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 the school committee and superintendent will be back in a year. And, um, we go before the planning board with some data that's going to be tracked over the year in terms of the usage. And so I, you know, we are going to be sort of helped to, um, meeting our obligations and that should include, you know, ongoing discussions.
Yeah. And I, I thought that was a good suggestion and then I spoke to the committee about that. Make sure that happens. It's just kind of, when does the clock start ticking? Because email this for instance, or we, you write a letter, we have, we have, you know, we asked, I said, no, so that was first thing that I had with the zoning board. So.
I didn't think it would hurt for you to start now.
Yeah, yes. Um, so in regards to some of the neighbors' concerns, you know, in the contingency, after the first meeting, I said, um, immediately of all three people, I don't want to think forty people, but come and be representatives. And we did, we had a conversations and most of the conversation is about these over the lights. And so something I just want to share, I addressed that, prior to address that, um, folks bringing in containers and stuff from outside, um, that's, that's been going, being a lot. We've, uh, looked at the gating, how, how, especially with football games, how it's gated, how we're monitoring that, how we're monitoring people coming in and out. Having a conversation with the police and folks and folks in management games, how we're like, how are they matriculating, the police officers are matriculating, not just standing in park a lot, um, that's all helpful. And I think, you know, those are conversations, I just don't think I'm happy. And, you know, and what I said to the neighbors was, I can't, I can't help solution develop without no problem. So I, the person before, call me, I mean, call me, email me, whatever. Let me know. I said, I can't fix it. I can't fix everything, but we're just starting a lot of things from top. We can talk to they should be mindful of. For being right, make sure you pick up your trash, you know, it's, it's better. Um, don't jump over the fences that you said and jump over, don't there any outside who has the report, but almost. And I think those conversations were happening and we can continue to have those conversations. And I did go back to the neighbors and I said, here's what we've done so far. And they appreciated that, that, and then I, I hadn't heard from them again. So, you know, I, very, very weak until last night. So that's fine. I mean, we'll continue to have this conversation. I want to be good neighbors. I think this whole initial part of lights were kind of a little, as it did the first, because we want to make sure the neighbors will not like we support, the need is evident and definitely. And what we need, so, um.
The other thing too, I forgot to mention is that one of the things I heard from three or four of the neighbors is that, you know, one of the things we do is we offer the feel, I don't know a payment for, I don't think we've rented, but adult, their adult home is plenty on the turf. And several of the neighbors are saying that, you know, these are mensonges and that the vanity and the language is, you know, can get intense. Again, that's something we can communicate to the folks that are using our, you know, uh, we have care, custody control of this asset and that we can, you know, remind them they are expected to, you know, behave, um, with proper language and, you know, ask, you know, hold them, you know, accountable as well. So I, can I talk to John about that? On those things.
Yeah. So Jen, as you said, like, there's clear responsibility that the superintendent has in this matter around lighting general, as does the, the school committee. Um, and I guess I just want to be plain that, um, you know, it, it doesn't have to be the chair. So I would like to delegate Kate to kind of represent the school committee in whatever it might be, in meetings or in communications going forward. So do we need to, is that a motion?
I, I don't think so.
Okay. So I'm just going to be clear, yeah, that, uh, Kate will kind of be.
But I think.
Be representing the school. And obviously come back to us on what we need. There's things we all have to vote on.
If you're talking about for the zoning board, the actual boards, um, we have to vote that application. And then we would vote or we would deliberate and get sort of give you instruction on what to say. You can't just go and say, you know, um, it has to be whatever the will committee is. And, and I think it would likely be just that you know, it may very well be John. And John's our designated, John's going to present the application. This is what our application, I mean, at this point, it's pretty much done because it's, we're asking them to codify what the neighborhood has already approved. Um, you know, but I know last night, you know, kind of got into like summarizing what hap, I think we need to be very clear as a committee with the direction is this is what we want said representing us and then it's.
Let me see. Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
Um, the only question I had is, did you file the open meeting?
No, um, I, we haven't, I believe I haven't told the twenty seventh.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, Tom Costello asked, he wanted some time to just think about that, to provide some advice. Uh, it's, it's interesting that, uh, to, you know, there's one form to fill out. It's really not a self-reporting mechanism, right? And that form is clearly, you know, a person is making an allegation against the committee or another person. Um, what I'm struggling with a little bit is I probably shouldn't be the one to fill that out because what happens next is that it comes back to the chair of the committee, which would be me, to be processed again. So, um, that's what I'm a little confused about to be quite honest. I understand we have.
Well, it's not so, I, because I went online too. I also got a, I got an opinion from the open meeting, attorney general's office. Um, and it's, it's not, we're not filing a complaint. It's a self-report that this is what happened and this is the remedy we took. And we're just on the record.
So it's just the, you know, I say.
No, no, I could use the form. Right. But the form says, what was the complaint? Here it was. Voted, it was, you know, yes, it was upheld as a vote by the committee. And this was the suggested remedy and we're going, we've gone half effectively, I guess, gone forward, or some of us have. Yeah, we've committed that we are going to make the following remedy. So I, I don't, you know, in the spirit of trying to keep track of our, you know, dimes and pennies, I don't know that we necessarily need to talk Costello for it, but, um, because.
We could talk, I, I did.
I could talk to you online.
I did not brush, brush that with him. He, he heard about it somewhere else and brought it up with me.
And then he's charging us with that. So.
It was again, I didn't, I did not initiate that.
We have to finish the conversation. Okay. I, 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 okay.
All right.
It, but we did vote that it was going to be filed, so.
Right. I'm just, um, do you think it makes more sense for you to file it?
I'm happy to file it. I get it.
All right. Yeah, I, I could share some of the documentation I started putting together if that's helpful.
Sure.
Okay, Ellen. I, so we have three items for executive session. We are not doing the second and third item because uh, the meeting was rescheduled, uh, for an executive session after our October thirtieth meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to vote to meet in the executive session for the following reasons. Executive session pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Marvel head school committee and Marvel head teachers association. M U P L dash twenty four dash one zero five seven zero is an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair so declares without intent to return to open session.
Some votes.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, we'll pull on this, Jen.
In favor.
Kate.
In favor.
Listen. Al in favor, uh, the motion passes four zero. We will now enter executive session. Um. We are entering the executive session pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty one A thirty, purpose three, discuss litigation, Marvel head school committee and Marvel head teachers association. M U P L dash twenty four one zero five seven zero is an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. Thank you.